...the order.
Uh, Stanford pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie Rolco.
Councilmember Campfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
Mayor DeBoer.
I am here. Item two, review the rules of procedure for the council meeting.
Show them what I've done there.
Um, either. I thought we already did it.
Oh, sorry. I apologize about that.
Okay, no, we'll skip that.
Uh, item three, motion to agree the agenda for tonight.
So who?
Support. Decision changes conversation. Susie?
Councilmember Campfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen discussion. Item sound on the agenda. Oh, all right. No old business, new business. Item six, letter A, public hearing, King Milling Industrial District, please.
Yes, Mayor, see council, in your package, there's an application to create the industrial development district for King Milling. They are doing an expansion of their property. As you, as I have started to do in the past, in order, if you were to consider providing an industrial facility, award an industrial facility tax credit to King Milling for their expansion, a district has to be five. In this instance, when we received their application for the, for the industrial facility tax credit, we learned that a very small portion of the property was an industrial development district that was formed in 1978 for the former Michigan Wire property. They had done an expansion at that time. So, um, in order for them to be eligible, a district had to be reestablished. So that is what's in front of you tonight. Just bear in mind, this is not, um, this is not a, you're not, you're not approving an abatement tonight, but you would be approving a district to allow them at a consecutive meeting to come back to for the industrial facility tax credit. So the project meets the requirements under the statute, um, which is more than welcome to ask questions you may have.
Just do the normal, I do what with the five year one that we've been doing?
Well, my recommendation, my recommendation was, my recommendation always is is five, then come back.
And this just allows them to then apply for the tax credit?
Correct.
They're too separate?
There's two actions. A district has to, you have to have, you have to be able, if you are wanting a district facility tax credit, you have to be an industrial development district. In this instance, the district is like this, so you have to create the district.
It's the same thing we did for Big Oil.
Correct.
Lighthouse, too, right?
Hmm, they already had a district.
Why didn't you just go back to planning commission? Was that happen?
No, this is your call.
Okay.
The council action. So, if King Milling's here tonight, he can answer questions you may have.
Jim Doyle, you'll be here at the next meeting also?
Plan to, yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, you want to open the public hearing?
Yes.
And then ask for the applicant to make a little presentation?
Sure.
All right, we will open the public hearing on resolution 419. Anything from King Milling?
I'm Jim Doyle, uh, King Milling, and, yes, we're applying for the tax abatement. We have to establish the district first. You can kind of see the construction going up. We've been fortunate to continue some growth and, uh, we're putting in a warehouse packing facility, so this will be where we'll send the flour from our milling processes to this new structure where we'll then pack the flour in 50-pound bags and 2,000-pound tow bags and so on, and then have a nice warehouse with dock doors and be able to pack trucks up and load out of that facility. So that's what's going on there, and it will, of course, help us continue to grow. And it's a part of our business. We haven't expanded very much. We do pack flour now, but in a very cramped area, and this will allow us to perhaps go and get some more packing business, so.
Any estimate on how many jobs this will create?
Well, we have filed that application, and, um, that's a question in there. We're, we're not looking at adding new jobs. We're adding, we're looking at retaining the jobs that we have, and, you know, over time, we continue to grow, but this, this facility, as I said, we pack now, so we won't be moving people over there from another area of our plan, so.
It won't be an increase of employees?
No, it's not an increase.
And I've got another question for you, Jim. When you guys came to planning convention, we approved 36,000, each quarter, 36,000, I think, 400 in total. And you're asking for 41,000, so where did the extra 5,000 square feet come from?
Well, the footprint of the building, I think, is 31,000 square feet, footprints. But then there'll be floors, and so if you add those floors, and I think there's a mezzanine level, but if you add all that square footage up of those levels, then you get to 41,000.
No public comment? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, motion for resolution 419.
Mayor.
You got to close the public hearing. No public counter, no other questions, we'll close the public hearing. And a motion on resolution 419. So who?
I'll support.
Any other discussion?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Campfield.
Yes.
All right, item B, Lowell area fire authority staffing presentation.
Uh, good evening. Thanks for having us out tonight. For anybody that's not familiar with who I am, I'm Shannon Lur, I'm the deputy fire chief of the Lowell Fire Department. With me tonight is the chief Ron, and we'll read a quick backstory to where this is all coming from. We've been seeing some trends within our authority that have, uh, caught the interest of our authority. We've put together some presentations on what our staffing requirements are, are looking at, uh, moving forward, and the authorities asked for us to come up to the municipalities and present to you guys, so that you guys have, uh, information on where we're at with the staffing ones. Uh, we presented last night to Lowell Township in the event of an accident, so at the end of this, I'll go through some questions if you guys have any as well. So some driving factors that we discussed, uh, increased calls for emergency services, increased non-emergency services requests, potential for increases, improved customer services, and our current staffing concerns. So our calls for services, emergency services, so anytime somebody's down 911 and we've got a call for it, as you can see, has gradually been going up, 2016 from, uh, 773 to 2018 to 881. The big fact that isn't on this slide that's part of the calls for services is that 2016, we were at 50.97% of those calls were coming through between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. In 2018, 62.72% of our calls are now coming through that same time frame. So the majority of our calls are no longer coming in in the evening, they're coming in during the daytime when our staffing within our department is at its lowest. So a quick backstory to our department as well. We cover all the city of Lowell, all of Virginia Township, and most of Lowell Township. We roster up to 28 members, and right now, we're at about 20, and we do it right now with 100% paid-on call numbers, with the exception of the chief, he's a salary position, uh, part-time. So when I say staffing, uh, numbers being low, all of our paid-on-call folks all have full-time jobs, and right now, the majority of those full-time jobs are first shift jobs to take them out of our territory. Growing non-emergency response, our non-emergency services, um, you know, we're seeing a, a big increase, uh, in interest for commercial and industrial in the area. We're also seeing some increase in residential. Uh, when we look at inspections, we do pre-fire planning inspections for anything, multi-family, three-family or more, uh, commercial and, uh, industrial. A big change is coming at the state level for a large assembly. The state level right now is responsible for large assemblies, your schools, nursing homes, churches. The state doesn't have the funding or the fire inspectors to go out and do these, so they are going to be kicking this requirement down into the municipal level, so we're not going to be required to handle all of our schools, uh, all of our churches and nursing homes for the annual, uh, fire inspections, and those aren't even. The only thing that's biannual would be anything with a cooking surface that has a range hood, uh, we need to go in every six months, make sure that those are being planned, most of the simple inspections there. We're also working with building departments in all three municipalities on all new construction coming in, making sure everything's bonded with a coat and like, we find, so I'm just looking there. Numbers of tours and public education visits. Uh, right now, our staff, 100% volunteers to do, uh, all of our public education events. Uh, last year, we did fire prevention for over 900 kids, um, between our elementary schools, and we capped that at first grade and below. Uh, most of the municipalities and fire services go from third grade below, but because of the number of kids, the amount of time that's required to do so, we've capped it at first and below, because we simply just don't have the personnel and time to do it. And our department's becoming increasingly more self-institutional. Up five years ago, uh, most everything that was done in our building has been, was contracted out. Now, we utilize a lot of our in-house staff and take care of all our electrical and, you know, carpentry work and things like that with our in-house staff, because we have master electricians and carpenters and very odd staff. Increased potentials for service, uh, still waiting for NPAC to give me my hardened numbers of what our transportation numbers are looking like. Uh, when I had a conversation with NPAC putting this presentation together in November, our north, south, and east-west thoroughfares and what they were going to give you the, the numbers over the last three years for fluctuation, uh, the only thing you can tell me is that increases is definitely there. Uh, increase in the residential area-wide, uh, not only single family, but multi-family within our 60 square, we're seeing increases there. Uh, we're not seeing a lot of vacant houses sitting around, a lot of houses are sold and are hurt. Increased business interest in the area, as you guys are well aware, uh, a lot of our commercial and industrial areas are, are full of them. An increased request for mutual aid, we're not the only departments that are dealing with the increase in calls and the decrease in, in available personnel, so we're also mutualizing a lot more free money. Uh, improved customer service, the most obvious one would be, you know, reduced response times. If we had staffing at the station, out the door, uh, pull through the trucks, you know, our response times would be reduced. Guaranteed, uh, response crews, right now, we have no guarantee that we have a response crew. The only person that we have that's in town during the day, again, is Ron, uh, his full-time job is at Light Power, and he's allowed to leave for that, for calls, but he's the only one that is closely guaranteed. The improved ISO scores, so we did an ISO audit, um, two years ago, right after Ron took over as the chief. We did reduce the city's number from a five to a four, uh, we reduced the townships from a nine to an eight beat, uh, and doing research for this and discussing it with ISO. Staffing directly will account for one and a half to two points, indirectly will account for, you know, significantly more points. One, because of the pre-fire inspection program, we'd be a lot more efficient with it, we'd have a lot more, uh, facilities covered. We've got about 700 facilities in our 60 square miles that were responsible for inspection. We're doing that right now with two guys at 30 hours a month on part-time. We're not beating that 700 mark.
Can you do a quick rundown on what ISO score is?
Uh, so ISO is, directly affects your insurance ratings both as businesses and as residential. The lower the score, uh, the more it affects your, your rate. That four-point mark is kind of that, that magic number we wanted to get to, because that's where you start seeing the, the, that's fluctuation rate. You guys are at that now. We would increase, uh, our score, so it's a higher score for a lower point value, if that makes sense.
On your inspection check, are you then charging back to those customers, to me that be standards, insurance requirements, or just, so you guys just do it on a business to be our?
Well, uh, business to ours is, is an exact, uh, we're required under, uh, Michigan Firefighter Rights and No Act to hit those primary areas at our high-risk areas. At this moment, we do not have an ordinance to charge back as a business licensing fee or anything like that, uh, be able to review those inspection costs. Right now, it's all, it's part of our, uh, my budget. The indirect, like I said, would be increased, uh, inspections. It also would be a more robust, uh, fire prevention program when it comes to the schools. We're actually graded on that, uh, through ISO, uh, how many schools we're seeing, how many students we're seeing, how, how we document that information out. So that would also be another indirect. So indirectly, we would probably accumulate more scores than just the staff we have, so I'm thinking. Our current staffing concerns that we have, uh, large amount of our current staff, uh, that we have daytime, are new people. We have two, uh, two people right now that are in our fire academy, sorry, three people right now that are in our fire academy, that do have some daytime availability, but again, they are in fire academy, they do not have, uh, license or they haven't gotten their fire certifications. To certify as a firefighter in the state of Michigan, it's a 260-hour academy, plus we are, uh, emergency medical, uh, first responders as well, so there's six months worth of additional training on top of that, plus the, uh, annual continuing gain credits that are required. Our current day staff, again, with the exception of Ron and when I'm available, is very green. They're all within a year. The national statistics, in 2000, eh, well, 2000, the average tenure of a paid-on-call firefighter was between seven and 10 years. Last year was between four and less. So we're seeing, uh, massive decline nationally in the number of folks that are interested in doing this, uh, number of folks that are sticking around and doing this. Part of that is because everybody's seeing the same trend. Our call lines are going up, the training requirements are going up, the amount of time required to invest into this is going up, and people just don't have the time for it anymore. The other part of it, too, is, is those that are, that are very engaged into it, uh, for lack of better explanation, we're the, we're the training department for the full-time staffs. The City Grand Rapids County was Wyoming's, a little bit constantly hiring and bringing people in. Of all of our turnover over the last two years, we've lost the majority of our folks by going to full-time staffing. And part of the, the full-time staffing requirement by the contracts is they're not allowed to work for us for a minimum of a year. So our proposal, um, I'll cover this part now, a lot of the information that I got, uh, for the proposal itself was by going to light departments. By light departments, I went to Callademia, Byron Center, Aggleston, Muskegon County, Walker, Muskegon Township, Dutton, uh, and got a lot of their information. We're very similar in call line. Dutton, Byron Center are actually on the lower end of the call line where we're still running more than what they are. The other important thing to note is, um, we right now only run priority one units and priority two headquarters. So your cardiac arrest calls and your, your high priority life-threatening type calls. We're not doing priority three calls, and we are on waivers with, um, all three of our nursing homes in the area right now. So Laurel's, Ken, oh, sorry, Laurel's, Ken, uh, Fountain View, Green Acres, three. We're only going there in the event of a cardiac arrest or an extended ETA by the ambulance, so we've already trimmed back where our potential call line would be. The important thing you keep in mind with that is that that is all controlled by KEMS, Kent County Emergency Medical Services, their licensing authority. Those waivers are currently under review as to whether KEMS is going to continue to allow them to happen or not. If that were to change tomorrow, we would see an increase of about 300 calls per year adjusted priority one to those nursing homes. So when we came up with our proposal, we looked at our peak times. Our peak times, again, are between 6:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., uh, Monday through Friday. We have plenty of adequate staffing for second shifts and weekends for our paid-on-call staffing, uh, to cover the remaining time. We looked at three full-time personnel, uh, with a minimum staffing of two. The reason we look at three is, number one, uh, to, to be able to begin most of the services that we provide, EMS, uh, fire suppression, vehicle extrication, car crash type calls. Three is our adequate number, somebody to operate the apparatus, two people to start your suppressions, or so on, so forth. The other thing is in those, those timeframes at 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., about 22% of what we get are overlapping calls. So what that means is we're already out on one emergency and another one comes in about 22% of the time. With having three personnel, that allows us to leave one person or two people behind at one incident and break off to, to go to the, the second incident. Those personnel would be responsible for basically all calls, uh, medical calls, illegal burns, fire alarms, and those would strictly be handled by our, our, uh, full-time staffing. We wouldn't have any paid-on-call staffing coming into the station during those timeframes. All inspections and daytime, uh, public education would then obviously be covered by that full-time staffing, and any fill-in that would be required, so for vacation time, sick time, so on and so forth, would come from our, our, uh, paid-on-call staffing. Our current budget sits about 357,000, uh, minus off of the, the numbers that we looked at through neighboring departments, uh, that three full-time staffing, we're running about 265,000. What we looked at is within our 370, uh, 57,000, where we could reduce numbers down to make that 265 a little more palatable, if you will. Uh, we spent about $2,500 on lawn care and snow removal that we would handle in-house, uh, $2,200, I'm sorry, $22,000 on inspections, uh, for those part-time positions and the, uh, weekends that would be handled specifically by our full-time staffing, and then about $20,000 can be shipped out of our, uh, paid-on-call salaries right now to bring that budget down to about 219,000. Divide out amongst the three municipalities equally, which doesn't quite fit into the formula but close, brings it to about 67,384 for three full-time staffers.
Additional, right?
What additional cost is there besides the personnel to implement this program?
So, uh, right now, no, I mean, we, we have, we have the flexibility within our budget to, to cover any uniform costs and things like that that would already be factored into this. So that, that would cover, that 219 that we just discussed would cover, you know, any expenses that we have. We're not looking to add additional apparatus to the fleet or anything, we're going to use our current fleet. We've already, uh, changed the direction of our fleet to where our fleet is all, all diversity now, so all of our fire trucks, if you will, are, are licensed to be able to respond for medical calls and so on and so forth, so we wouldn't have to add a fleet to it.
So that's insurance is in there, right?
That's insurance is in there, correct.
So if the main cost is personnel, and the number was 265, and then we had the savings got us down to 219, so three people at the average salary is close to 90,000 per individual?
Well, by the time you factor in insurances, workers' comp, things like that, it's going to come off to be about roughly 90,000 per person. But again, that's, that's not the salary by any means, though.
Right.
If it is, that's not what I'm saying.
You're going to fly, man.
Yeah. Other models that we did look at, uh, we talked with outside agencies, so there is a, there is one department in Kent County, uh, that utilizes an outside EMS agency to cover their calls. They still staff full-time firefighters to cover the first, the fire calls, but the first responder calls are, are covered by that outside agency. That outside agency charges about 165,000 to 175,000 dollars a year to provide that service, plus a vehicle. So you're only getting a 12-hour person, uh, to respond to medical calls, nothing else. They're not handling inspections, fires, accidents, uh, public education, any of that stuff. We looked at...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, will that, that salary, will, will that be competitive to get you what you want as far as?
That was using all?
Those three gentlemen?
Yep, that was using, uh, salary basis of those departments that I mentioned.
Okay.
Uh, part-time staffing, so that just seems to be the, some of the way for some of the bigger departments. You look at Plainfield, Kentwood, uh, Wyoming, Colterville, they're all utilizing part-time staff. So if I, as a paid-on-call guy here at Lowell, wanted to go work at Plainfield part-time, I could do that. But typically, what we're seeing in those positions are guys that are, you know, in their early twenties that are working part-time at Plainfield, are working part-time at Colterville, are working part-time at Wyoming. So what they're doing in these departments is they're, they're on the proving grounds. So as soon as the first, uh, full-time position comes open, eh, we're a question. First full-time positions come open to those municipalities, they're taken from that part-time staff. The biggest challenge to a part-time staff is, is staffing. The departments that I spoke with that are utilizing part-time staff, they said the minimum requirement to fill each time slot is anywhere between, uh, five and 10 personnel. So for three people, I would need between 15 and 30 people to fill those spots, because these people all have other jobs, because of our requirements to keep them within the part-time and the full-time, uh, so you're, you're looking for a much broader net of personnel to hire and to, to fill that. The other complication is, uh, that's going to primarily come from outside of our staff. Our staff that are currently working, are working full-time, uh, and aren't going to have the availability to fill these part-time spots. So we're going to have a, a training curve on just our equipment and our areas. Uh, the other complication there is orientation is continuous. You bring in two or three guys, you bring in, you know, your hiring group, you go through your orientation, uh, City Grand Rapids has enough, you know, they're hiring dozens right now, uh, they steal a couple of them away, so we're constantly going to be going through that orientation process. We're not going to be having long-term folks.
Have, have you presented this to the townships yet and what?
We presented to Lowell Township last night, for Gen's is next week, so, yep.
Okay, anything back from?
Uh, lots of questions, that's all. We're more of the, this is more of an informational period than, I said anything else, but yeah, lots of, so, similar questions. And then 24-hour staffing, that was another model that we looked at, was 24-hour staffing. Given, like I said, our, our paid-on-call numbers that we have now that are available for that second, third shift timeframe, we didn't see the need for, for 24-hour staffing at this point. Uh, not to say that municipalities aren't going to continue to grow, and that needs to come down the road, but right now, that's not a conversation that we're looking at.
Outside of being in the building, the overnight's really are already staffed, because you have four people required to, five, however, required to respond overnight.
Another thing that I forgot to mention earlier on, uh, is that 60 square miles, 881 calls, uh, we are the busiest non-staffed department in the county. Having no full-time staff, there's not a department in the county that runs more than we do with no full-time staffing at all.
That's before the waiver drop?
Yeah, it's at current.
With the proposed wage scale that you're looking at, is that competitive, where you'll be able to retain employees, or do you anticipate they'll be jumping to grand rather, but how does that compare to other?
Um, obviously, I can't guarantee that, you know, some of the younger guys that are going to commit at the firefighter level are going to want to look to going to the City Grand Rapids, there's a lot more advancement opportunity, but I think that the scale that we're offering is, is going to be competitive enough. Typically, Grand Rapids starts on a lower end than what a lot of smaller departments do specifically for that reason, to try to prioritize what makes you, uh, make you. One of the things you got to keep in mind, the, the full-time stations, my son works for the city of Portage full-time, they're on what they call the Cali shift, so they work nine days a month. The way these guys actually make their money is picking up batteries. Right. So, and that's not going to be an option here, because we're not going to be doing 24s, and we're not going to be doing a Cali shift. That's pretty much how the guys in the fire service and the gals are making.
Well, with 24s, too, you're given overtime on a block, you have two shifts a week, you're going to be your overtime.
And setting this as a salary allows us to control that overtime as well, so.
Do, do we reimburse our guys for their training, or do they come out of their own pocket?
So we, we pay for the classes and, uh, we pay for the, the first responder classes, um, and any costs that are associated to the state class. With passing the fireworks bill several years ago, 6% of what you pay on firework goes back to firefighter training every year, so that's covered the majority of our, our training. And we have $11,000 in our training budget right now. Yep. So.
Well, I, I know in our business, I mean, we train people and they leave, and sometimes we have an actual thing where if they leave before a certain time, they have to pay us back.
A lot of businesses will do that, too, with tuition reimbursement.
Yeah, and we have, we have fireworks, the fireworks bill.
Right.
Yeah, and we have to ask the fire, the firework bill.
So I didn't know if that's... If an employee, if we pay someone, if we pay for someone's school and they leave within five years, there's a period they have to pay it back, there's a type to the table.
And I might be a little confused on the inspection. You guys don't actually go out and test the sprinkler heads and smokes? You're just checking the buildings for proper codes and things like that?
Yes and no. We don't do the actual flow testing, but when the flow testing is done, we're there.
Okay.
You know, we're there during that inspection process. We're there during the green tagging for your employees or any new suppression systems that are being installed.
Yeah, we do that for my company and you get, not just you guys, but other guys are always there. It's time to do that.
Yeah, a lot of times the larger facilities will invite us in, you know, and say, hey, we're doing this on such and such a day and time. And they'll actually ask us to invite us in and... Yeah, what we're primarily looking for is that you actually like functioning, you know, fire extinguishers within code and lines.
Because I was going to say if you were doing the others, that's definitely charged more.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
Is there grants or state aids or state programming?
So there's a federal grant available, but that was supposed to open in January. Yeah, so there's a federal staffing grant that does come out every year called Safer. And it is applied for by many, many, many departments for this. The Safer grant, what the Safer grant allows for a municipality to do is that you submit in a request for the number of personnel that you're going to be hiring. They will fund that up to two years and then you're responsible for the third and fourth year to follow. If you're not able to perform that third and fourth year, you owe those previous two years back. Where we see a lot of those fundings go is Saginaw, Flint, Detroit, Grand Rapids. In most of those, you know, higher bottom areas, lower areas. And typically where the second part of that grant goes is on their extensions. So Saginaw did a two-year cycle, three years running for six guys through extensions.
There's a knack of writing grants and you have a gentleman in town, Hal Ackman. That guy could write grants and get money for the school and security like you wouldn't believe it, so that helps when you have a good grant writer.
Sure, and like I said, the complication or talent is that...
And also, it's just recently become something that you can do as a job creation.
Correct.
It used to be written so that you could provide for your whole-time staffing, but they wouldn't let you hire people you already had.
Right.
Or pre- meant to do it. So our knowledge is in-house.
Yeah, our intention would be to fill these positions from within our staff. Number one, the orientation time would be very limited. We, they're already clear to drive our apparatus, they already know the area, they already know our equipment. So we intend to fill it from within. Previous to last year, we would have been required to hire from outside, but Michigan representative actually got that law changed to what we could hire from our own staff and network.
Okay. I'm back to their numbers. The only thing I would say is when you're looking at, and I think it was, I commend you for trying to save as much as you can, but it says lawn and snowplow, $2,500. I guess, I know because my son's in that, there's a lot of wear and tear on equipment, you know. I don't know if your trucks have plows on them, if you've considered, you know, do you have to go out and purchase a...
We would have to get a hopper.
A plow and that type of thing, so I'm just throwing my two cents in. I'm not sure if that's where, you know, to look to save because I know, you know, snowplow is really tough on a truck. You know, one transmission, you're right back into that, you know, more cost than if that was $2,500.
And that's just a small portion of the $2,500, yeah, that's a small portion. Unfortunately for us, we don't have a lot of area that needs to be plowed, but it's definitely something to take into consideration, yeah.
The way the fire authority is set up, we share that about one-third each with the township.
Correct, I was going to kind of elaborate the budget situation to do this, if you don't mind me. So, just to kind of overview, our general fund revenue we receive annually is about 300, I'm sorry, just a hair over $3 million. Of that, of that $3 million we receive, roughly, one, just over $1.4 million is added in real profit taxes. So the 15.7 mils that we pay currently, that subsidizes 47% of our general fund operation. And of our expenditures, our total expenditures in the city are about 2.9 million and 3, $2.975 million is what our expenditure. So we're not spending about $30,000 annually from what we receive. So we're in the black 30 grand. That 2.9 million covers our police and code enforcement, which is 28% of our budget. The bond for the building, that's about 10% of the budget. Public Works is another 10%. And I can go on and on, but those are the big, those are the three big areas that we cover. Obviously, we have treasury that has to be staffed properly, parks we maintain, city hall, manager, all that stuff. But the fire department, we contribute $125,000 annually to the fire authority, which is about 4% of our general fund expenditure. Currently, this proposal that's being in front of you, we couldn't even afford our share without additional revenue. And really, I mean, the only, the only way to really generate more revenue is we have, you'd have to either special assess or increase the mileage in order to subsidize this. And that's just, that's just, that's just to get us that 67, you know, to that $67,000. Plus every year you have to take into account inflationary. We haven't even, you know, at this point in time, we're talking about a non-unionized workforce that could change. Things happen, I don't know. Those are issues as well. And so it'll, it'll, this proposal is a, will require an increase in revenue, some way, some form. The other, the other issue is this is clearly a need. I can attest to the issues that Ron's facing in the daytime. These are legitimate issues. That being said, and at the end of the day, what they're proposing probably may be the most cost-effective way to look at this. However, I mean, I've had conversations with them about possibly, as time evolves, having the police department trained in medical first response. So we could possibly work something out with the fire authority that our police department could be trained to handle that portion of calls for them, so maybe we don't need the, maybe we don't need as many full-time. I don't, I don't know. The other, the other thing to think about is, city of Wyoming, currently, they, their public work staff handles their fire calls. You're seeing a lot of communities that are, that are doing, are taking that task where the public works are handling the fire calls. Now, we have an older workforce, but we're going to be seeing a younger workforce here pretty soon. And at a very, at a very soon council meeting, we're going to be talking to you about a DPW reorganization. That could, you know, maybe that's an idea to consider, that maybe it's less costly to do and maybe it addresses the daytime need. The other, the issue that we're going to fall into is two. There's two things they have to think about if you go that route. The first one is, first off, the inspection issue they talk about, we can't address for now. And I don't know if PCI does fire inspections. I really don't know if that's in their gamut. The other, the other, but the other thing to think about is when we, if we do pull our people to do these, assist these fire tasks, one, they could be pulled out of the city. And two, you know, unless we were to be compensated equitably for it, to address that. Or, but the other issue is, is they have other responsibilities that they need, you know, that they have to do on their jobs. So does, address, so are we robbing Peter to pay Paul and is it working? At the end of the day, I don't know, but these are the things that, where I said is what I'm thinking about because it has to be done with new revenue and I don't, you know, I don't, I can't, I, unfortunately, we're not the federal government, we can't print money.
Well, they can't either because they're closed, but the Wyoming model, they're trying to get back away from it because it did not work.
Can I touch on both of those real quick? The Wyoming model uses their DPW employees for structured fire responses only. The Wyoming model also uses 10 full-time fire personnel per shift a day. So there's 30 roughly full-time fire staff, not including inspectors and chiefs. Their, their requirement to pull those folks away is pretty minimal. For us, you'd be looking at roughly 450 to 500 times a year, you're going to be pulling somebody off from a water name break or a downed power line or whatever the case may be to respond to these calls. And it could be, it could be a quick 30-minute medical call, it could be a three-hour to four-hour fire call. So you're going to have, you know, broken sewer lines or water lines potentially sitting for three to four hours without attention because we've got, you know, a fire problem.
Also, people who live in the city, the people that we are tasked to represent, pay for that DPW. They pay for that police department. They pay for a level of service. So now you're talking about, we don't just cover the city, okay, we go into all townships. How many officers are on during the day if they're doing something else? We pull them away for a medical, they still are tasked with fire. If there's an accident, they're going to have to be there anyway, most likely, in a different capacity. But then you're talking about, you're going out to Lincoln Lake and Four Mile. Now, all the people who live here that are paying for these guys and the DPW guys and whoever to be here are without them for, could be hours, could be... How long did a plane crash take, which was in the township? 36 hours, right?
We were on scene during the ice storm for almost three hours with medicalist past week because there were no ambulances available. Once we've made patient contact, we can't just leave the patient sitting.
And sitting on wires waiting for consumers and doing whatever else as you're doing. You're not talking about go and you help your old lady up and you sit her back in her chair and then keep it moving. That's such a small subset of what they're required to do now. So I, I think cops running the medicals is great, but that is such a small sliver of the need of this whole fire we're talking about. And I think you're going to get so much blowback from people who pay the tax rate that they pay here that say, well, somebody broke into my garage, but there was no cop because he was up for Genes Township, doing whatever it is he was doing, waiting for a guy's blitzer to get back up, which is an hour all day long. I, I think the blowback from that or from, well, I had a sewer pipe leak into my front yard for, you know, now there's biodigestor in my front yard because the DPW guys were out, I don't know. I think it's a cam worm that it's dangerous to open up when you're asking people already to pay what they pay to live here.
The fire department already is split somewhat equitably amongst the three communities. And so I think that's probably the fairest way to do it. We're about $75,000 is our contribution to that, right, roughly?
We're 125 a year, you know, for the truck, by truck.
Right, but this increase was about 225, split three ways to $75,000.
67 and 68. 67, 38, yeah.
So, I mean, generally, we've seen increases in revenue every year that exceed $40,000, which is about what we're short of. I think it's a difficult to do it.
Yeah, but you gotta remember for the next 19 years, you're going to see $30,000 increase on pension costs every year, every year. That's if, that's if MERS doesn't lower the rate of return, which you're talking about right now, which adds another $100,000 right off the bat.
Yeah, but okay, are more people moving here because their insurance rates are lower because they have full-time fire or because we do provide a level of service that they can't get somewhere else? I'd be remiss to say that the, what do you call it? I don't know what you worded it as, but the thing that they got up here is a failure too, let's be honest. The outside agency.
Oh, outside agency.
Oh, yeah. It's an expensive nightmare and the upfront cost is a lot more than, than that slide.
Yeah, their, their staffing budget for just their fireside is almost $600,000.
Plus you put in there mutually, but that's not what it is anymore. It's automatic aid. So if a neighboring department goes out on a certain type of call, we're going no matter what. So you get halfway there and you're not needed or you can come back. But what do you do during that time? Because eventually that's going to trickle down to your Plan B and your Plan C, your DPW guys. Like, oh, there's a medical at the west end of Ada Township and they're out on something. We're going to yank that probably because the model they got to the west isn't going to pick it up for them. So I just would be, plus I don't think Steve or Rich has the people to cover that. And especially if you're talking about these nursing home waivers going away because that's going to be a nightmare from night to dawn.
Your costing, your costs associated to utilizing outside agencies, just to get started, you're looking at five to $600 per person for just the initial training.
And you have to buy a vehicle and outfit.
You, you have to license your vehicles, you're going to have to buy AED suction. Most police cars all have AEDs and that, so that would be, you know, cover that. Suction units are about $700, I mean, you're going to be, you know, several thousand into just the, you know, for costs to do it. Plus again, we are required to re-license our EMS license. We are required to have so many continuing eggheads per year. So now he's going to be looking at trying to work in overtime for officers to take CDs or take them off the streets so they can take the CDs and all that.
With the proposed wages for the three guys that are non-union, what happens? They're here working and decide to join the union because the police are in the union, the DPW guys are in there?
Well, we can have that happen with the crew we have now. Paid-on-call firefighters, and I think it was Belvin. Belvin is our closest... They have their own unionized department. So that could happen tomorrow regardless if we go full-time or stay paid-on-call.
What does that do to cost? Does that add 25%?
Depends, an hour a week, negotiation.
Depends on your three-slope arbitrator.
Right, so I mentioned earlier that we, you know, we are the busiest non-staffed department. When you look across the board, I'll use ADA as an example. ADA guys are making 21 and some change an hour per call right now, so they're paid-on-call guys. Not their full-time staff, just their paid-on-call guys. Ours are at 16. ADA does about 500 calls a year, we're at, you know, almost 900 calls a year. So when you start comparing, even Alto, I think is at 17 now. We're on the lower end of the A scale right now, so I mean, that could, even if our paid-on-call staff decided to unionize right now, that could create some headaches for a budget right there.
This may be a question for you, but is there any way that DDA can do any funding to help offset some of that cost for us?
The only, the only thing that DDA could do...
Go ahead.
The only thing they could do to alleviate the general fund is they could take more of the bond payment. Which frees up anywhere between $100 and $150,000 in the general fund.
For City Hall, talking about...
Yeah, for City Hall.
Or, I don't know if this is an option, but isn't, wasn't there talk, I don't know, last year or the year before, about supplementing some of the police budgets? It's the majority of calls for service are in the DDA.
The same thing, same question. See, that's where, I would look at that, but your only option to alleviate any of your issues is to head, which I, which I already plan on proposing in this year's budget anyway, is for the DDA. The DDA's seen significant gains. So the DDA is going to be asked to take on more of, I don't know if it's going to be $100,000 or $150,000. I haven't, I haven't drilled that down yet, but they will be asked to take on more. I mean, you really, you have that authority to just, to leverage that, to take on more of that debt.
And this is, we've been working this now, I've been on the fire authority for a while and we've been working it for a whole time. I've been on there, I imagine, probably before. So it's not a, I don't think we're going to start tomorrow, but I think sooner rather than later because that ADA one isn't going to go back down to, I don't know, the first year I started was what, 400 and some change, right?
Yeah, I was in the low threes at that point. I've been doing it for 22 years in Ron, I've been doing it 30.